Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call the special meeting for July 12, 2016 of the Ojai City Council. The order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Blatz.
Here.
Mayor Proktem Wierich.
Here.
Councilmember Lara.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Councilmember Clapp.
President.
Councilman Haney, could you lead us in the pledge, please?
Ready?
Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The purpose of our special meeting tonight is twofold. One is we have a budget workshop session and then we have a closed session. Normally, when we call a special meeting, we don't have time for public comment, but we do have one public speaker's card. So I'm going to ask Russell Snyder to come forward and address us.
Honorable mayor, councilmembers, thank you so much. I'm Russell Sidney, Executive Director of Ojai Valley Green Coalition. Just wanted to say good evening and thank you to all of you and let you know that I'm here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
Real quick, do you have a copy of the programs you were proposing out of the 2016-17 budget with you to make copies of during the closed session for distribution?
I have a copy of the funding request.
You had a lot of different programs. It ended up to $50,000 in your request?
Yes, and that was actually this last funding year budget and we've -- but that would be similar to what we would do this year and there's other details in that funding request.
Right. And I just -- we ought to have that when we deliberate on it.
Okay. Who should I -- okay, good. Thank you.
I actually have copies of -- those were all included in our budget packet on the 28th, so we'll get copies of the -- I'll make copies -- get copies made.
Right. It was a past meeting. There was also some museum information.
Right.
What I'm trying to say is we ought to -- all the information's been submitted over a period of almost six weeks.
Right.
It ought to be in one package for us to be looking at this together.
Okay. Well, it was put in two different budget packets, but I'll get a separate copy for you right now.
That's my point. Yeah.
I have another question. Do you have an accounting of where the -- for the money last year that was given to you by the city?
Yes, we have quite a bit of detail in terms of our expenditures included in the funding request package.
Okay.
And there's several pages of financial details towards -- attached to that.
Okay.
And that's part of why I'm here is to address any questions you might have with regards to those details and I will be here through the duration of the evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. McClair, my intention is to go ahead with the budget workshop and if we have time within the special meeting to proceed to the closed session, we'll do that. If not, then we can have the closed session after our regular meeting, I presume. Is that correct, Mr.?
That works perfectly, yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Then I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay. And I'm going to turn it over to our Finance Director, Rudy Livingston, who's going to go through where we are right now with the budget. So the nice thing is we actually have an adopted budget, so we're actually talking about amending our adopted budget for fiscal year 1617.
Now, I do have one question because one of the items that we were going to discuss during the budget workshop is the funding requests for the various organizations. I can go ask -- we can ask staff to make a copy of us. I think Amber's available, so I'm not sure how we want to -- how that meets with what we're doing.
Mayor Tim Wierich.
We have an agenda item for further budget discussion, the regular agenda. There's other issues to talk about.
Absolutely.
And we can come back to that when we have the documentation.
You bet. I'm just going to recommend.
With my colleagues' consent. Yeah. We do that way. There's other issues to talk about.
Absolutely. I just want to make sure that we're all, you know, on the same page here, so. With the budget packet, you should have received a list of proposed adjustments that we are looking to make to the budget that was approved two weeks ago. And so... No, it's actually -- it's actually -- I took the -- I took what we -- I was -- took that -- well, no, that's the adjustments. Those -- that page right there is the proposed adjustments to the prior year, to the 1516 budget.
Oh, prior year.
I also had some pages that were here. I took everything that was on those pink -- that pink area of those sheets and summarized, put it together into a -- some tables here that were Exhibit A.
I got something marked A.
For the budget packet. No, that was from last budget packet. We can make copies of it real quick. So those were -- those -- what the -- those schedules do is they actually go through and list all of those items that were in that pink area that were suggested adjustments to the budget that was adopted and taking them down one by one. Since she took my pages there, I'll go through on this one here. So what we have provided to you, we have -- we adopted last time, we adopted the proposed budget with those numbers and we know that there's some items that need to be adjusted. We know specifically there are five adjustments that we are proposing. The first but -- the first adjustment on that page is we have updated numbers for the unfunded PERS liability for this coming year. And so the first adjustment is related to adjusting the amounts in our budget for that unfunded liability. The second is an adjustment, which is actually a fairly significant adjustment, is to remove the administrative costs from the redevelopment successor agency budget and fold those back into the general fund budget as appropriate. Some of those items don't necessarily go into the -- back into the general fund budget, but they do have an impact on that general fund budget. So this is eliminating it through all the funds within the city because it impacts several different -- several funds because of the -- it impacts the overhead allocation between all the funds. You take them out and it impacts those. The third adjustment that we are proposing is some adjustments to the capital improvements program and some of those are additional items that we're adding and some of them are recombination of different items. Like, Mr. Grant and I, we got together, we met, and we felt that it wasn't necessary to have each individual piece of these street projects, for instance, listed separately on a different line item. So we combined them into one line item for, I believe it was overlays or something. I'll have to look at them. So we -- it's just a recombination plus adding a few projects in there. We have not, as has been requested by a couple of members of council, actually set apart a separate line item in there for the sightlines at the Libby Bowl, but that's one of those things that once we can identify a cost, that we will work to get that adjusted into the CIP program. CIP program's somewhat flexible. We're, you know, we look at the individual budget items for this year and we're passing a dollar amount. Those dollar amounts can be actually moved around a little bit within the approved budget as we go forward. Depend, you know, so we will get that into there, but until we have a real number in there, it's impossible to actually put a placeholder in there for that, as has been requested by Mr. Haney and Mr. Wierich. So that is one of those things that's on the list to do, but we're waiting to get some further information on what the estimated cost would be before we can get those programs. So that is not included in here. The fourth adjustment is some rounding adjustments that we have. If you notice, I -- everything in here should be in tens, not -- there should be no dollar amounts, $1s in here. And to the extent that there are some $1s, it's ludicrous to think that we can budget a year out and come to the dollar or even the penny or whatever. So it's just rounding and a couple of miscellaneous adjustments to items that we know need to be corrected. The fifth adjustment is adjustments that we need to make to salary and benefit projections. This does not have -- this does not have any -- anything to do with the items that have been discussed in closed session. This is strictly related to newer information coming forward and reallocation of different costs for salaries and benefits outside of any proposed changes that we have discussed in closed session. So this is just reallocating and updating some of the adjustments. Some of that has to relate to the new PERS amounts that we've got. We had a pretty good estimate, but it was off by a little bit, so we've made some adjustments there, reallocated a few things. Those are the biggest -- the five items that we have on the expenditure side. On the revenue side, we have -- basically, we have two adjustments on the revenue side. One of them is to make some adjustments to some proposed revenue estimates that we have, particularly to property tax. When we did the original -- when we did the original budget, it -- the amount that was put in there for property taxes was a little bit higher than what the estimate was. It was a typographical error in there, so we're proposing to bring that down. The interesting thing, though, is I ran the new numbers earlier today and this budget actually seems to be pretty much in line with where we actually finished up the year for property taxes. So we're -- but I still -- we still have an adjustment in there and then there's a few adjustments in there for different parks and rec revenue and a few other items in here. We increased the TOT amount slightly based upon updated numbers. And then we have another item in here, which is adjustments to CIP, which really is pretty much -- decided to hold off on that a little bit right now because what that would entail is we know that some of the items that we increased in our CIP budget will be funded from some deferred revenues that are being held in the general fund right now, which are developer deposits of some -- one sort or another. And so when we -- when we actually recognize that deferred -- that those deferred revenues, it actually comes into revenue, so we have to increase our revenues and then also increase expenditures to offset that. So it's going to be in and an out, basically. So right now, I was going to move all those through and I've decided that it's better to wait and do that at a later time as we get some numbers firmed up in there, exactly which projects are going to be moving forward. So those are the adjustments. The net of the...
Thank you.
Mr. Livingston?
Yes.
Before you get to the net, I just have a question. If -- over on the expense side of the adjustments.
Yes.
Most of those adjustments are technical in nature, really.
That is correct.
But the successor agency is more than just technical.
Absolutely.
What's the fiscal impact of those adjustments?
The net impact of the redevelopment successor agency elimination... The net impact to the general fund of eliminating the redevelopment successor agency is approximately $90,000.
Okay.
A little bit more than $90,000, $90,190. That's the net impact. Which ultimately, some of that would have -- we knew would happen eventually because as things -- time went long, we wouldn't be able to allocate some of my salary to that and, you know, other things. But some of that is actual costs that we -- for instance, a portion of our annual audit has been paid for by the -- that, and that will no longer be available. Attorney fees that we have related to issues, you know, those kind of things. So there are some real negative impacts to the general fund, but the total right now is $90,000.
Okay. Yes.
What is our -- pardon me. Should have gone through you. I apologize. What is our total unfunded liability?
The...
Last time I heard, it was like $5 million or...
You're talking about the OPEB, the retiring medical?
Total liability.
Unfunded liability. It's interesting that you ask that because actually this afternoon, I just got a new updated actuarial report. It's the draft and I have not had a chance to go through it because it happened right before meetings that I had going forward, but I will have that and I'll brief the council on that within the coming weeks here.
Well, the reason I ask is I still don't quite understand unfunded liability and how it relates to a budget, but I know that we pay -- we're doing a pay-as-you-go plan. Is that right?
Correct. Plus partial pre-funding.
Okay. So is it kind of like a credit card with a high interest rate and our partial -- are we continuing to fall behind or are we catching up?
No, actually, we're catching up. I -- one of the... I really need some time to go through this thing in detail, so I don't really want to get into the numbers, but there's a couple of things that happened. Because we funded $200,000 towards our unfunded liability, $100,000 last -- in '15, '14-'15 and $1,000 in '15-'16, we are able to use a different -- we are able to use a different discount rate for computing that unfunded liability, which actually it decreases our liability because we're partially funding it. So -- and we have assets that are starting to increase in value so that will help to offset that in the future as well. There is one thing that's -- it really is complicated, but there's a thing called an implicit subsidy, which actually comes into play starting in fiscal '18 that has to be shown on our financial statements and it's essentially -- it's the cost of not charging age-adjusted premiums to our medical -- to our people on our medical plan.
Oh, interesting.
So essentially, a 20-year-old generally has lower medical costs than a 70-year-old or an 80-year-old who happens to be on a retiring medical program. And so because recognizing that, the actuaries have to compute an implicit subsidy, which actually that comes into effect in the coming year. So it's another hit that we'll have to absorb. But even including that, the numbers that I'm looking at, that I looked at it real briefly, I think that we are actually, you know, we're moving in the right direction. The number's actually coming down a little bit, but because we're funding a portion of it, we get to use a split rate for our discount rate. So we're able to, instead of having a 4 percent, presumed, I think it was 4 percent rate, we're able to get that up to a little bit higher rate because we're actually earning income on the money that we put into the plan.
Rather than the pay-as-you-go.
Absolutely. And so we're doing both now.
I guess my concern is that it's something that has a tendency to just kind of be over there.
Mm-hmm.
And I would hate to see -- I mean, $5 million is a lot.
Yep.
And it's going to -- those -- that's going to continue.
Correct.
We've made some adjustments in how we do retirement and things like that, which will help. But that improvement is going to be delayed for, I don't know how many years, before it really starts to kick in and have an impact on that unfunded liability figure.
Correct.
So we may be whittling away at it, but is it $10 a year, $50,000, $1,000 a year? Are we substantially whittling away at it? Because that's a huge liability for the city to have.
Yeah, and I can't answer that until I actually have a chance to digest the actuarial valuation.
Yeah.
Because it's all based upon what the actuaries determine, which they go into a whole bunch of, you know...
So we may want to have to develop a more aggressive approach than we have right now in order to deal with this situation. Thank you.
Mayor Proktem Wierich.
Yeah, I think that Councilperson Clapp raises an interesting point here. If there is an implicit compounding rate that exceeds, you know, the cost of earnings on our cash balances.
Mm-hmm.
There's an argument to be made to be more aggressive.
Yeah.
I think she raises a good point there.
Right. Until I actually have a chance to digest this, my quick, very, very quick, brief, you know, going through it and having the discussion I had with the actuary a couple of weeks ago, I believe that what we are doing now is going to have -- it will have an impact. I'm just not sure how significant an impact until I can actually go through and do a comparative analysis of this and... Yeah. And I just received, as I said, this afternoon, and I hope to, within the next few weeks, to get it digested and be able to bring a summary to council, at least, you know, be able to distribute it to councilmembers so that you can -- I don't know that it necessarily has to be an agenda item, but we can -- I can provide you guys, you all, with a summary of where we are with this and what, you know, the different components and kind of explaining that in non-actuarial terms. Those are even worse than accountant terms.
Councilman Haney.
Rudy, if you're going to provide a summary, would we be wrong asking for some type of forecast and do some what-ifs? And I wouldn't know where to start on the what-ifs, but for instance, if we are at a $5 million...
I think it's over $1.
Then if we paid this much annually, it would do this, if we paid this much annually, annually, it would do this. Is that a fair way of looking at it or is that just...
Well, it's something that I would have to work with the actuaries on that. And there are some -- there are some of those type of calculations in the actuarial report, I believe, but like I said, I'll have to get through that. And once I get a chance to digest this and we can talk about it and I can give you a good information, I hate to just go out and say, oh, well, we could do this. Obviously, the more we pay in, the better, you know, it impacts the liability. And there is a compounding effect of what we pay in, maybe even a little bit more so than the pay-as-you-go method. So, yeah, there's definitely, you know, definitely a benefit to doing that as soon as we can, but then again, we also don't want to tie up a bunch of our money right now because in reality, this is a liability that will be incurred over the next 20, 30 years roughly, and if we were to fully fund it right now, it would be tying up money that wouldn't be used. So we don't -- I mean, it's a balance that we have to strike in there and so we'll -- I'll give you some information later on and then we can have a chance to discuss -- we can certainly discuss it at council if you'd like, or initially, I'll get -- I'll send out a summary to everyone so that -- with a copy of the actuary report, for those of you who love to dig into those things.
Mayor Blatz, I have some other questions on the five adjustments.
Okay.
Is that the appropriate thing, way to proceed?
Go for it.
To defer to your...
No, that's fine. Go for it.
On the issue of the lawn sightlines.
Yes.
That I think at least two of us are committed to doing.
Yeah.
Not sure about everybody else, but I'm concerned about it just not even being a line item. What would be wrong with having a line item and just a TBD in there? Just so it's acknowledged in the budget.
Did you want to...
Absolutely. If council wants to put that in there, we'll put that in there.
Yeah. I mean, typically, when I -- there's a whole bunch more line items than what you're seeing and a lot of them are zeros and so we don't print those, but certainly, there's nothing wrong with that. We have a whole lot of items that are of that nature.
Well, I don't know my sense of colleagues, but Councilman Haney, what did you think of -- what would you think about that?
Yeah, I would agree with that. It's the way to go.
Okay.
Yeah.
And let's see. Right, that's it. That's my only...
I just have another question for you, Rudy. In terms of the overall budget.
Yes.
And we are going to be looking at some of these specific requests for funding. How does the revenues from last year compare to the projected revenues for this year?
The 1516 revenues compared to what's in the budget?
Yes.
Or the...
Yeah, the 1516 revenues as compared to the budget for 1617.
Okay. I just updated the property tax numbers this afternoon in my schedule. I updated the TOT numbers. They beat our expectations for this year and they're in line. I believe that we were looking at -- originally, we were looking at a 2% increase in sales tax, a 2.5% increase in property taxes and a 3% increase in TOT, and that was over prior year budgeted amounts. Okay? All of those, except for the -- the sales tax is lagging a little bit right now, but TOT and property tax finish -- right now, finish the year pretty strong. We won't know real -- the final numbers on sales tax until mid-September because of the way that they're reported by the state. We get them filed and it's usually about a quarter in arrears before we actually get the numbers, so we will make a final adjustment once we have those numbers in probably September. That is the one number that is, in my mind, is lagging a bit and I have some concerns over that. Some of that has to do with the unwinding of the triple flip, which is a discussion that's much more complex than probably we want to have right now. But it was a shifting, you know, shifting by the state that started in 2004 and terminating in 2016 where they did this swap between sales tax and property tax and even some motor vehicle license fees and hence the triple flip name. And they moved them all around and reallocated them and they grew at different rates and we thought, well, they would -- we weren't sure exactly how -- what they were going to do when they unwound them. And when they unwound them, they went back and made some adjustments based upon what they would have earned on, you know, if they were classified as this type of revenue versus this. And so our final payment on that is $200,000 below what we anticipated was going to be. So the sales tax is the biggest concern right now. The other revenues seem to be doing fairly well. The parks and rec revenues, I've been -- this budget is pretty conservative on parks and rec revenues, although I did bump it a little bit in some of these adjustments, partly because it's a very seasonal revenue stream. And I haven't been able to completely build a reliable forecasting model, which I'm actually working on right now. And by the time we get to next year's budget, I'm going to be -- have a pretty, I think, a pretty reasonable seasonal forecasting model. Actually, looking like I do with the other, the big three revenues, I look at what the three-year, three-year and five-year history is and kind of project out based upon on those numbers. I'm going to do the same thing for the parks and rec numbers as well. But I think overall, the answer is we're doing better than budget and I think it's in line with what our projections are.
Okay. Well, here's the reason for asking. It's -- and I want to look in the big -- I don't want to get caught up in the line items.
Absolutely.
Just look at the big number. We know right off the bat that if all the expenses were the same as last year's proposed in this budget, we're going to be $90,000 -- we have to find $90,000 more.
Correct.
Because of the undoing of the successor agency.
Yes.
So that's $90,000 that we have to -- that we have to budget for, that's coming in from, I presume, these increases in the sales tax and the TOT and that kind of thing.
Yes.
But when we look at what's being budgeted for special -- for special items such as just as one would be the Green Coalition, where they're asking for $50,000, or take the Arts Commission was budgeted $52.5, we're saying $45, they're asking for $60. What I'm trying to get a handle on is how realistic the revenues are going to be. I think we're probably real close on the expenses because we -- a lot of the big expenses we have a handle on, such as salary and overhead and things like that. But how much room is there and do we have to pull it out of something in order to increase any of these amounts that you've already put in the budget for these particular requests?
Yeah, actually, one of the items that I found this afternoon, too, looking at some numbers, that came in a little bit higher than what I anticipated, was our pass-through from the former redevelopment agency, which was money that was normally going to the agency and now is coming to the city. That beat our expectations, which actually would cover that $90,000. Okay. So -- and one thing that we certainly do not -- you know, Mr. McClair and I, we have this belief that we should budget conservatively because I would much rather budget at $100,000 and come in at $150,000 than to budget at 200,000 and come in at $150,000. That's not a good situation. The other thing is we always want to make sure that we are covering our operating expense expenditures with ongoing revenue, not one-time revenue. So that's also one of the reasons why I decided not to put in the full, you know, the CIP adjustments that I wanted to do right now because that's one-time money. But looking at those numbers, I think that I'm comfortable that even with our conservative position right now on where we are, if you add up all of those expenses, that all of the adjustments, those five adjustments that I projected, that leaves us with a deficit of $20,900 in the general fund. Okay? Which I believe that can be -- that can be made up from a couple of sources. One of those being revenues. The other one is there's a possibility that some of the expenditure items may be -- we might be able to adjust some of them downwards. I was having a discussion with Ms. Wold this afternoon and there are some signs recently that building activity is slowing. And to the extent that the building activity is slowing, then that contract, you know, that contractor expenditure that we have in there, that would be scaled backwards. And in fact, it's actually already being scaled back slightly from where we are in the 1516 fiscal year. And so I think that that $20,000 number is easily absorbed by a few adjustments that we might need to make in here.
Mayor Proktem Wierich.
Just clarification. Your best guess as to the actuals for property tax and TOT.
Mm-hmm.
For 1516.
Mm-hmm.
Compared to budgeted for 1617 in those two categories. Can you give me some?
Well, I will tell you right now that...
The relationship between those two numbers.
The actual numbers I got for property tax actually...
I'm not talking about budgeted 1516.
No, I'm talking about my actual 1516.
Actuals versus budgeted.
Property tax revenues are almost spot-on with my budgeted property tax for 1617.
So actuals 1516 look like right at budgeted with no change for 1617.
Yeah, which -- so that gives me some comfort.
That's comfort, yeah, because it's going to go up a little bit.
Yeah, and the TOT is in the same, you know, same ballpark there.
Basically, our actuals right now look to be in those two categories right spot-on with what we're budgeting in 1617, which is very conservative.
Yeah, pretty close, yes.
Okay, guys. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and even if we -- if that sales tax is the real wild card and I'm just real...
I understand.
... uncomfortable until I get those numbers in September.
I got you.
Anyone have any further questions of Mr. Livingston with regard to that? Anyone have any further questions of Mr. Livingston with regard to that? No? All right, where do we go from here? Do we want to, are we gonna discuss any of these special request fundings?
Well, one of the things that I would say is that, okay, we do have a, we do have a deficit right now with these, with these proposed adjustments. So we can, we can fund that in a couple of ways. Either we can fund that by adjusting some expenditures downward, revenues upward, or by using general fund reserves to cover that adjustment. So we have to keep that in mind, that if we are going to make any of these adjustments, they have to be, you know, we have to make sure that we're not going into a negative position, okay? So that's one thing that council has to consider, and we can certainly have a debate and discussion on that. I will tell you that I'm comfortable that the revenue numbers could be bumped a little bit within our, still our conservative framework where we're at right now and cover that $20,000 number. But there's also, I think, I honestly think that based upon what we're seeing right now, perhaps the, some of those contract services numbers can be scaled back just a little bit as well.
Rudy, on the summary of the requests from community organizations...
Yes.
You have the prior year budget, you have the proposed budget, you have additional requests and requested budget and change from the prior year. What number currently is in the, is in the expense side of our proposed budget?
Currently, oh, in the expense, but we have $100,000 in there.
Okay, so...
And it's unallocated.
It's unallocated.
And there's two things, so, so I gotta make sure, the Arts Commission has its own budget line, so that's slightly different, but the 2-1-1, the museum and the Green Coalition, those would all be part of that.
So Independence Day, Green Coalition, Valley Museum are the where the $100,000 placeholder is now?
Yes.
Okay.
And the 2-1-1?
And the 2-1-1, which we have always funded, but...
And the, yes, sorry.
I just need to verify that because I think I put a note on there that it was already in the budget, but I want to verify whether it is or isn't, just a moment.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It is not, it, that would, those all would be part of the $100,000.
Councilwoman Clapp?
We had a lot of attorney's fees this year. What was the budgeted attorney's fees last year and what was the actual?
I won't, for 1516, I won't have final numbers until really about mid-November, the real true final numbers, because even though, you know, June 30th is passed, we still have bills that are outstanding to be, that will have to be paid, and those will be rolling in over the next six to eight weeks, and so they'll be put back into there, so I can't give you a true number.
Are we already over budget on it?
Um...
And if so, how much?
I don't have, I don't have my budget to actual report with me, so I don't...
The reason I'm asking that is because that seems to be one of our real...
Yes.
...unpredictables.
Uh-huh.
And this year, I suspect we've gone over significantly, and if that continues, we're already, if we budgeted the same amount as we budgeted last year versus what we actually spent last year, that could put us even more in a deficit.
That is, that is correct. There's a couple, there are a couple of these potential landmines, so to speak, out there, and that's one that if things happen, and that could very well be the case, because we know that right now we're pushing into some new uncharted territory with our short-term rentals, for instance. How much might that number be impacted by what our, you know, our activity right now is to, you know, to stop the unauthorized and illegal activity in the short-term rental? You know, that's just one that just came to mind this afternoon, we were having a discussion about that. There are a lot of, a lot of things that come up, and so what, one thing, I, we have, we have a few budget adjustments for the 1516 year that you have, some of those are attorneys, because there were, there were things that the, we knew during the year that we would have to, we would possibly have to bump those numbers up. In fact, when the adjustment to the Colontuno agreement was, was passed, it was mentioned in that admin report that we would need to come back later on in the year to adjust based upon where we actually look at things. We know we've had a lot of activity in the legal field, in the legal area, so I, the legal budget is, it's over budget right now.
And also with the code enforcement with the STRs, you're also in an uncharted territorial on whether, if we outsource that, what that will cost...
Absolutely.
What the additional cost is gonna be to the city to have to do that enforcement.
Yeah.
So, yeah, okay, that, I want to see that, I want, it's important to look at that in relation, the budget requests in relationship to these other matters that are going over budget at this point.
I have to remember, Mr. Mansker tells me I gotta stop eating the microphone, so I gotta remember to push it away from me a little bit here. I tend to get right on top of it.
Many people have the opposite problem.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, you're absolutely right. You know, we, what we need to do is we, we believe that we have a reasonable and realistic budget here. There are things that could happen at any time during the year where things could go crazy, and at that point in time, if there's something that, that's really, really out of line with the budget, then we would have to bring it back to council and have some discussions about that, and there would have to be some further actions, either to eliminate some of the things that we're doing or to use city, you know, reserves to cover some of these things. Fortunately, we're in a pretty good position where we've been able to build our reserves over the last few years, but they're not inexhaustible. I mean, it's not like we have a huge reserve balance out there. We do have, you know, I'm pretty comfortable with the way things are right now that we're, we'll be able to, you know, weather most of the things, but I think we're going in the right direction, but there are a few things out there that come and could jump up at us, and at that point in time, I think we would have to address those separately.
Councilman Lara?
Yes, Mayor Blatz, thank you. Thank you, Rudy, for all this information. Going back to Councilmember Clapp's question about attorney fees...
Yes.
With all those extra legal fees that we requested during the year, would they be under the city attorney budget or were they be under another department?
Well, most...
Like, for example, the Buildings Appeal?
Yes, most of them would be under the attorney's budget, okay? However, the, when we had to fire, hire outside counsel to, to represent the Building Appeals Board, that was, is, would be budget, would be included under the BAB budget.
Under the BAB budget?
Yeah.
Okay, so that wouldn't be under the city attorney?
No, but it's still part of the general fund.
Okay.
So...
So, I mean, in identifying the extra legal fees, it would be good where all those are, are placed to see the actual number?
Yeah, and as we're getting very, I mean, you know, we've passed the actual year-end, but as we get some better numbers, I, we'll be able to provide some estimates of where we're ending the year, and I'll start, once I get this budget, I'll put, put to bed here, then I'll, I will start putting together a few numbers there, and I can, I can advise the council on where we're looking at for the different areas.
I did have one more question, but Councilmember Clapp, I don't know if it's a follow-up question to the one I just asked, because I see you reaching for your mic.
No, no, it's not. I have another question about Libby Bowl pledges.
Okay, I have, I have a question on Libby Bowl too, not exactly on Libby pledge, but I'll ask, Mayor Protim Lyrick talked about putting in line item for the lawn?
Yes.
My understanding, looking at the budget, is that all the funds on the CIP is not always allocated to a certain project, is that correct?
That's correct. We try, as we, to develop the CIP plan, we try and identify the projects that are out there.
So do you know how much you would allocate to that line item if all the council members agreed to add that line item?
Um...
Or would it come forward in the, in the future?
I think it would have to come forward in a future discussion, because we don't know the, we don't, I don't, I couldn't even guess at the amount right now, to be honest with you.
Councilman Lara, I have some information on that.
Well, I was just wondering, yeah, I'm open to hear more dialogue on that.
I think Mr. McClary and I both have the same information, that we have found the two proposals that were made for doing this at the time of the original Libby Bowl construction, and there are cost estimates associated with that, but the thing that Councilman Haney and I found out immediately looking at that, is there's significant errors in those elevations. So there's, the bottom line is, there's work to do.
Yeah.
Well, I'd be, I'd be supportive of adding that line item in the future.
Well, we can put it, we can, I can set up an account number in that line item for that.
And just a TBD on it.
Well, we'll just set it up and it'll just have a zero amount in it right now, and we'll know that it's there for work in the future. Absolutely, no problem with that at all.
Okay, Councilwoman Clapp?
Have all the pledges for the Libby Bowl come in? We haven't had a, a county for that.
Yes, we actually did. They, we, we received the last amount of those probably in, oh, probably roughly about, I think, if I remember right, it was about February, we received the final payment from the music festival folks, but we received all of those pledges.
Excellent.
It's amazing, actually, that we, how, you know, well that happened in getting all that money paid in, so, yeah, usually that doesn't happen.
It's stock market.
Yeah, probably so.
Any other questions for Mr. Livingston? All right, how does the council wish to proceed with regard to these individual requests? We've got in the budget right now, which is a, which also is a $20,000 or $21,000 deficit. We have $100,000 set aside for what appears to be 100 and, you know, a little over 100, you know?
100 and what, 22?
Yeah, something like that.
Little under, yeah, 122, right? $60,310 from 182,310?
Mm-hmm.
Mayor? Yes. Are we, in the closed session, we're gonna be discussing employee...
Yes. Yes, yes, we are.
So my suggestion is that we go in and we talk about the employee funding and salaries, get that taken care of, and then come back and see how that might impact anything else moving forward.
If we do that, we could move on to some other questions in our next 15 minutes, unless we want to, Mayor Blatz, it's your call.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna get a lot accomplished in 15 minutes in closed session.
Yeah, right.
I really don't.
I was talking about, yeah, using the additional time for questions on budget.
Yeah, I agree.
But that would mean coming back from closed session late tonight to finish budget.
Well, we can go in for 15 minutes, but then we're gonna, if we, Mr. Summers, if we go in and we discuss aspects of salaries in closed session, and then we come out and we have another agenda item in the regular meeting, can we discuss it then? Can we do these adjustments, or can we talk about these special allocations then?
The special allocations can be talked about in the open session item on the budget.
Okay.
This was structured to provide flexibility for the council.
Okay.
But we could go into closed session and discuss...
And you can go into closed session now, discuss the compensation side.
That's what we're gonna do, for the benefit of the public.
We gotta know what we're working with.
We're, the council's gonna adjourn to closed session, and there's two items, conference with legal counsel initiation of litigation under Government Code Sections 54956.9D4, number of potential cases, one, and then also conference with our labor negotiator under Government Code Section 54957.6. So we will go into, are we expecting to have a report?
I do not expect a report.
Okay, then we'll be back after our closed session.